Buenas tardes, a todos. El 29 de noviembre y gracias por asistir a esta reunión especial del Consejo de la ciudad, que es una presentación de taller. Todos se sentarán y disfrutarán. Gracias a todos, gracias por venir, realmente lo queremos. Esta se trató de una presentación. Esta no es una audiencia pública. No estamos obligados a hacer esto por ley, pero el Consejo se sentó muy fuertemente, en el espíritu de la participación de la comunidad y la transparencia, que programamos esta reunión para que podamos difundir información dura sobre el hogar de los trabajadores, sobre dónde estamos con el hogar de los trabajadores en Rhinebeck, cuál es la historia de eso, dónde estamos hoy, dónde estamos con este proyecto. Quiero recordar a todos que el Consejo de la ciudad no ha aceptado oficialmente esta propuesta para este proyecto. Podemos aceptarlo, podemos trabajar con el desarrollador para cambiarlo, masajarlo, o podemos rechazarlo. El hogar de los trabajadores es algo que hemos estado trabajando desde 2010, justo después de adoptar nuestro plan de trabajo y participar en la nueva zonaje, con la downzoning de todo. Vamos a tener presentaciones aquí sobre todo eso. Siempre hay preguntas y preocupaciones con cada proyecto, pero lo que necesitamos como Consejo de la ciudad y la comunidad es el tiempo para pasar por el proceso. Veremos cómo se desarrolla, podemos tomar preguntas después de todo lo presentado, pero quiero aseguraros que dentro del procedimiento de nuestra política de ley local habrá tiempo amplio para que todos sepan y todos hagan el discurso en el futuro una vez que tengamos la ley local funcionando. Así que supongo que mi esperanza para esta noche es que todos sean respetuosos, que escuchen, que miren nuestros oídos abiertos, nuestras vías abiertas y tomemos la información. Y realmente quiero agradecerles a todos por venir porque es un tema importante para nuestra comunidad. Tenemos una agenda lenta y básicamente vamos a tener a Warren y nuestro planillero presentar la historia del hogar de los trabajadores. Vamos a tener a Jonathan Mensch, que es el presidente y co presidente del Comité de Hogar de los Trabajadores durante los últimos 12 años, Jonathan, llevándote por todo el trabajo que el comité ha hecho durante los 12 años. Vamos a tener a Denise George de la enfermería de la condición de la Casa de la Virgen de los Norte, que hable sobre la relación del hospital con esta propiedad y de las preocupaciones del hospital con el hogar accesible y algunos fondos. Y vamos a tener a Ken Carney de Carney Construction y su equipo presentar una breve descripción de Locust Hill, que es la propuesta que informe informemente ante la ciudad. También vamos a tener a Warren explicar nuestro hogar de los trabajadores local y qué pasos tenemos que tomar desde aquí. Así que con eso, empecemos. Voy a pasar el plazo a Warren LePlansky.
¿Me escuchas? Mi nombre es Warren LePlansky, soy abogado para el Consejo de Rhinebeck.
Bien, espera. ¡Hola Warren!
Sí, voy a mantenerlo. ¿Hola? Soy el abogado del Consejo de Rhinebeck y fui el abogado del Consejo y trabajé en el desarrollo y la pasada del Plan Comprehensivo de la ciudad y el Código de Zonaje, que se trabajó durante muchos, muchos años antes de 2009 cuando ambos fueron adoptados simultáneamente. La pasada del Plan de trabajo y el Código de Zonaje fue el resultado de muchos años de esfuerzos por individuos, comités y consultores. La intención de estos esfuerzos fue determinar lo mejor para preservar el carácter rural de la ciudad, espacios abiertos, aumentar las oportunidades de hogar accesibles y lograr muchos otros objetivos del Plan Comprehensivo. La preocupación de la ciudad en este proceso fue el hecho de que el Plan Comprehensivo y el Código propuesto incluían una gran cantidad de lo que llamamos downzoning. Por ejemplo, el distrito de zona de tres acres fue cambiado a cinco acres, cinco acres a diez acres. Lo llamamos downzoning en los discursos de zoning. Y nos preocupaba, y los consultores de la ciudad nos preocupaban sobre temas potencialmente raised por los propietarios de la propiedad que podrían raised el tema de lo que llamamos zoning exclusivo. En ese momento, los litros se habían llevado a cabo con éxito en otras municipalidades contra ellos cuando intentaron revisar sus planes de hogar y Código de Zonaje por downzoning. Y algunos de esos, o muchos de esos fueron exitosos. Lo llamamos, había una línea de casos, los llamamos casos de Berenson. Y estábamos muy conscientes de las decisiones y estudiábamos esos con mucho cuidado para asegurarnos de que nuestro Plan Comprehensivo y Código de Zonaje pasaran por la cinta con respecto a las acusaciones de zoning exclusiva. Solo quería leer algo del Plan Comprehensivo, hay mucho en él que no puede cubrir todo, pero el Plan Comprehensivo contuvo dos capítulos enteros sobre la visión de Rhinebeck con respecto al hogar y la diversidad. Y fue articulado como sigue, solo voy a leer esto si lo soportan. "Trata de lograr diversidad social, económica y cultural dentro de la comunidad al planear una variedad de tipos de hogares. Trata de proporcionar hogares para Rhinebeck, compradores de hogares por primera vez, seniores y trabajadores, incluyendo retiros, escuelas, hospitales, atención médica, bomberos y personal de la policía, y trabajadores de oficinas, entre otros. El hogar proporciona residencia con refugio y es un factor clave para determinar la calidad de vida, empleo, balance de hogares, acceso a transporte, comutación a trabajo, acceso a servicios en escuelas, consumo de energía y otros recursos naturales. La proporciona de hogar de calidad para personas de todos los niveles de ingresos en la comunidad y un stock de hogares equilibrado es una parte clave de cualquier estrategia de crecimiento inteligente. Y somos una comunidad de crecimiento inteligente. Al usar el crecimiento inteligente para crear una diversa variedad de opciones de hogar, Rhinebeck puede usar su infraestructura más eficientemente, apoyar sus centros comerciales, mejor acomodar las necesidades de los residentes, ayudar a sus ancianos a permanecer en sus hogares y reducir o eliminar los impactos de desarrollo automático o dependiente de desarrollo." El Código de Zonaje contiene muchas provisiones que forzaron la promoción de hogar accesible, tales como el desarrollo multifamilia, oportunidades, instalaciones de alojamiento accesorios, unidades madre-hermano, esos tipos de hogar accesible. Los incentivos están construidos en nuestro Código. Pero lo más significativo, el artículo 5 de nuestro Código en la regulación adicional, sección 125-63, contiene provisiones extensas para promover el hogar accesible dentro de la ciudad. A través de impuestos en lugar de, a través de impuestos de desarrollo que se cobran a los desarrolladores que son obligados a pagar según la extensión de su desarrollo una cierta cantidad de dinero en nuestro fondo de confianza de hogar accesible. Tenemos provisiones en lugar de, donde se pueden hacer las pagas en lugar de proporcionar el hogar accesible y bonos de densidad, eso todo estaba construido en los Códigos de Zonaje. De hecho, la ciudad fue acusada por dos grandes dueños de tierras en casos separados. Y uno de los litros fue, de hecho, lo que llamamos caso de Berenson, donde el Código de Zonaje de la ciudad y el Plan Comprehensivo fueron rechazados como ser zoning exclusiva. Y estoy contento de decirles, si aún no saben, que la ciudad fue exitosa en defenderse contra ese acusado y fue descartada. Y de hecho, fuimos congratulados por el juez por el trabajo que se hizo por la ciudad en sus esfuerzos. Como resultado del despliegue en el mercado de construcción, que en realidad ocurrió hace un año antes de pasar el Código, el Consejo de la ciudad determinó wisely que necesitaba más para llenar las recomendaciones del Plan Comprehensivo y cobraron al Comité de hogar de espacio abierto y accesible de la ciudad con la creación de un amendamiento al Código de la ciudad, que después de varios años de esfuerzo, reuniones y audiencias resultó en un amendamiento al Código de la ciudad titulado artículo 5, sección 125-64.4, desarrollo de hogar accesible dentro del Distrito de Hogar de los Trabajadores. Y este hogar accesible amendado dentro de ciertos distritos descritos son, en realidad, los dos distritos de entrada de la ciudad. Esos fueron los donde decidimos permitir el hogar accesible, proporcionando la mejor oportunidad para un desarrollo más intenso de hogar de los trabajadores dentro de la ciudad por una amplia variedad de razones. Voy a pasar el plazo a John Mensch si está listo para tomar el plazo. Y él describirá en más detalle el trabajo del Comité de Hogar de Espacio Abierto y de Hogar Accesible con respecto a la creación del Código, que es lo que vamos a seguir siguiendo en entretener la propuesta de hogar accesible o hogar de los trabajadores que se propone.
Gracias Warren. Jonathan, antes de empezar, solo quiero recordar a todos que toda esta información, todas estas diapositivas, así como la reciente encuesta de la condición de la condición de la Casa de la Virgen de los Norte, ¿qué es eso? ¿Hogar, qué hacen? No, una encuesta, un estudio y recomendaciones está en nuestro sitio web. Señalamos con la agenda para esta reunión y está en nuestro sitio web, así que pueden obtenerlo allí. Gracias Jonathan.
Gracias. ¿Está funcionando?
No. Solo diga "test" un montón de veces y luego dejarlo. Dice, continúa diciendo.
Test. Espera, test.
¿Tiene encendido?
Usa ese.
Solo se me acaba de dar. ¿Cómo es esto? Vale, lo haré desde aquí.
¿Qué tienes ahí?
Vamos hacia adelante. Gracias. Ahí vamos.
¿Podemos hacerlo?
No me gusta hablar público, de todos modos, realmente no me gusta. Si podemos comenzar las diapositivas. Bueno, soy Jonathan Mensch, soy el co presidente junto con Chris Lizcom del Comité de Hogar de los Trabajadores. originalmente con el Comité de Hogar de Espacio Abierto y de Hogar Accesible. Nuestro nombre se ha reducido a lo largo del camino. Pero también en el comité conmigo está Dodd Crane, Joe Gelb, Nine Inch, Sue Harthorn. Y hemos estado trabajando en esto durante bastante tiempo, realmente volviendo, y Joe Gelb, volviendo al pasaje que Warren describió en 2009 del Plan Comprehensivo de la ciudad. Y para empezar, solo quería hacer un punto más grande, y eso es que el hogar de los trabajadores y el hogar accesible no es solo un problema de Rhinebeck. Si alguien lee las noticias, ustedes lo leerán, está por el país y hay una razón para eso. Y eso es que ahora mismo tienes a unos 40 millones de personas que rentan apartamentos o casas en el país. De esos, aproximadamente la mitad, 20 millones, están pagando más de un tercio de su ingreso su ingreso pre taxe por costos de hogar. Y eso es lo que se define como ser carga de costos desde una perspectiva de hogar. De esos 20 millones, aproximadamente la mitad, 10 millones, son lo que se llama extremadamente cargada de costos. Y eso significa que están gastando más de 50% de su ingreso pre taxe en el hogar. Así que eso es antes de que alguien gaste dinero en ropa, comida, seguro, costos de coche, cualquier cosa así. Ese dinero va a la vivienda. Si habéis mirado lo que pasó en la última ronda de elecciones, hubo iniciativas de los trabajadores en los votos en decenas de estados. Austin, Texas, solo marcaron un límite de 350 millones de dólares para el hogar de los trabajadores. En California, se ha vuelto casi, no una batalla, pero algo de una batalla entre las municipalidades y el gobierno estatal. El gobierno estatal está involucrado con las regulaciones de uso de la tierra local porque sienten que las municipalidades no están haciendo lo correcto. Así que esto está en las noticias y se ha vuelto un problema muy real. Para llevar esto hasta el nivel de Rhinebeck, en la condición de la Casa de la Virgen hubo un estudio que fue finalizado recientemente, hace un par de meses, sobre la necesidad general de hogar de los trabajadores en la condición de la Casa de la Virgen. Y lo que ese estudio mostró es que había una necesidad de 2,155 unidades adicionales de alquiler en el país en su conjunto. El condado también dividió eso basado en lo que estaba sucediendo en las municipalidades individuales. Y basado en ese análisis, lo llamaron una parte justa. Cada comunidad debe proporcionar su parte justa de hogar de los trabajadores. Y basado en ese análisis, mostró Red Hook y Rhinebeck, se juntaban. Red Hook y Rhinebeck deberían proporcionar 152 más unidades de hogar de los trabajadores que existen ahora. Y cuando lo estamos viendo desde una perspectiva de Rhinebeck, solo me llegó a la mente un tipo de ejemplo genérico de lo que significa ser cargada de costos en un contexto de Rhinebeck. Y esto se usaba en una especie de matemática básica, pero supongamos que es un trabajador en tiempo completo, alguien que trabaja en el pueblo a 20 dólares por hora en una de las tiendas de venta. Si trabajan por 40 horas por semana, están ganando 800 dólares, eso es 3,200 dólares al mes. Si una persona está mirando ahora mismo en el verde del pueblo para lo que está disponible, yo miré esta mañana, el único apartamento disponible, 1,855 dólares al mes. Lo que eso traduce es 58% de ingreso pre taxe iriendo hacia los costos de la vivienda. Quiero decir, eso es casi 60% del dinero que ganan trabajando en un trabajo en tiempo completo a 20 dólares por hora que va hacia la vivienda. Así que, con suerte, eso trae de vuelta de alguna manera lo que es la noticia real. Y ves esto, bueno, vamos a hablar de esto. Comisionamos un estudio con Pat y Warren, eso es parte de nuestros esfuerzos que llegaron a la misma conclusión, es una noticia real. Así que Warren acabó de leer, también iba a leer algunas citas del Plan Comprehensivo, pero Warren...
¿Quieres tu?
No, eran muy similares. Estaba leyendo la mía mientras vosotros andabais a través de la tuya y dije lo mismo un par de formas diferentes. Pero, déjame seguir adelante. Podemos pasar a citas, pero misma idea, misma idea. Esto es algo que es importante y es parte del sistema de valores de la ciudad. Nuestro comité fue formado, vamos a un cronograma aquí. Nuestro comité fue formado realmente en el contexto del pasaje del Plan de trabajo. Y como Warren describió, parte de eso implicó una cantidad bastante significativa de downzoning. Así que la zona de tres y cinco acres se convirtió en la zona de cinco, diez y veinte acres. Y en ese momento también se puso en marcha que necesitábamos pasar la legislación y necesitábamos pasar leyes alrededor, una ley alrededor del hogar accesible. Y nuestro comité fue formado para hacer eso. Y parte de eso, que Warren no describió, es que a lo largo del camino había originalmente una idea de que parte de la downzoning sería balanceada por una mayor densidad. Se llamaba desarrollo de la ciudad tradicional, por, en el momento, Stop and Shop, no Tops. Y también por alguna mayor densidad alrededor de la hambruna. Y habían una oposición a esas cosas. Y así, ni uno de ellos estaba incluido, pero la downzoning estaba. Así que la necesidad era realmente there, y nos ocupamos de algo que era claramente parte del mandato del Plan Comprehensivo. Y lo tomamos en serio. Y también a la punto de Warren, una de las primeras cosas que tuve que hacer cuando fui nombrado con Chris como co presidente fue proporcionar una declaración jurada de que estábamos trabajando en buena fe como comité que había sido recientemente formado para abordar estos problemas. Y hice eso porque honestamente creo que lo hacíamos y lo estamos. Pero el tema era real y las obligaciones eran real. No es solo una especie de obligación filosófica que se presentó en el Plan de trabajo, sino también una verdadera obligación legal que teníamos para resolver estos problemas. Desde entonces, hemos trabajado, han habido varias especies de pasos a lo largo del camino. Voy a describir cada uno de ellos, pero estábamos involucrados con la venta de dos unidades de hogar de los trabajadores en Gardens. Pasamos la Ley de hogar de los trabajadores. Pasamos la legislación de la zona flotante, que es lo que se aplica bajo esta aplicación actual. Y luego también comisionamos un estudio de patrones de progreso que detallaba más en términos de lo que iba a ser requerido para abordar las necesidades de hogar de los trabajadores en Rhinebeck. Así que si podemos volver, sí, esta es la siguiente diapositiva. Bueno, lo primero que hicimos cuando fuimos formados como comité fue que empezamos analizando la legislación de hogar accesible que se implementó en diferentes municipalidades en todo el país. Y estábamos mirando si había formas en las que el hogar de los trabajadores podía integrarse en los desarrollos y en la construcción del stock de hogares de la ciudad en el futuro. Y lo que encontramos es que algunas de esas posibilidades habían sido puestas en marcha en otras municipalidades. Fue a menudo, en el contexto de un desarrollo de mayor densidad, lo que significa que los costos de construcción eran mucho más bajos de lo que tienes para el desarrollo de familia, lo que es más lo que ves en Rhinebeck. Pero algunas de esas cosas resultaron en lo que Warren describió en términos de la Ley de hogar de los trabajadores, que creó el Tráfico de Hogar de los Trabajadores y también creó una obligación en el Distrito de entrada de la ciudad, que es el distrito en el que este proyecto está siendo aplicado que si esa área, que son seis unidades de hogar por acre, se desarrollara, el 10% de ese hogar sería hogar de los trabajadores. Lo otro, bueno, voy a entrar en el estudio de patrones de progreso. El patrón de progreso es un think tank regional. Son muy enfocados en la política. Es una colección de líderes de negocios, algunos funcionarios electos y expertos en la planificación de la tierra. Y nosotros los trajimos a estudiar Rhinebeck en particular. Y lo que el estudio de patrones de progreso mostró fue una necesidad significativa. Y realmente, dos grupos fueron específicamente identificados, que eran trabajadores más jóvenes que estaban trabajando, como describieron, trabajos de venta y luego también seniores. Así que también, una de las otras cosas que traían fue que Wells Manor, en ese momento, que era el único desarrollo de hogar de la ciudad subsidiado, el tiempo de espera para eso, para entrar en Wells Manor, fue casi tres años. Al finalizar el reporte, se hizo una declaración muy fuerte, que fue que para resolver, tratando de abordar de una manera real el déficit de hogar de los trabajadores en Rhinebeck, lo que debe desarrollarse es un proyecto más grande, una, dos y tres habitaciones que involucra financiación estatal y tiene el tipo de escala que es necesario para abordar las necesidades de la ciudad. Y eso es realmente lo que se propone como parte de la propuesta de Locust Hill. Así que luego también miramos qué, en el contexto de ese tipo de proyecto, es necesario. Y lo que encontramos es que el agua y el agua son dos elementos clave y que son una parte crucial de la eficiencia financiera de un proyecto de escala mayor. Sin agua y el agua no funciona, no puedes hacer wells y septicas para un proyecto más grande y esperar que funcione, lo que realmente limita las áreas en las que un proyecto como un proyecto podría estar ubicado. Así que estábamos mirando eso en ese contexto. También, otro aspecto clave fue la accesibilidad. La accesibilidad al pueblo, a los servicios de la ciudad y a las instalaciones recreativas. Lo otro que pasó es que recomendaron unidades de alquiler sobre unidades de venta porque es un proceso más fácil de conseguir a la gente en el desarrollo y en lugar de tener que comprar una unidad y lidiar con problemas legales y lidiar con la downpago, es mucho más fácil de firmar. Así que, ¿cuáles fueron nuestros hallazgos del comité? Nuestros hallazgos del comité fueron que la escala de la solución de alquiler debe tener una densidad sustancial para atraer a un desarrollador de interés en el Estado de Nueva York. A lo largo del camino, estábamos reunidos, nos reunimos con un número de desarrolladores de hogar de los trabajadores. También nos reunimos con fuentes de financiación. Personas a nivel estatal de Nueva York que examinaron los proyectos que se usarían para financiar un proyecto como este. Y lo que ambos dijeron es que necesitan tener una escala suficiente para ser significativos, para ser interesantes lo suficiente para el estado y para ser interesante lo suficiente para el desarrollador. Que también, que también reconocimos que nosotros internamente como la ciudad no teníamos los recursos necesarios para supervisar la construcción o el manejo del proyecto. Hubo mucho más sentido para sortear eso a un desarrollador de calidad. Luego, es en el contexto de todo lo que acabo de describir, realmente fue la recomendación para el marco para la legislación de la zona flotante, que nosotros marcaron para el Distrito de entrada de la ciudad porque tenía exactamente los atributos que se establecían como ser importantes para la creación de un proyecto como este. Y también era el único área de mayor densidad en la ciudad. Seis unidades por acre en lugar de cinco, diez o veinte unidades por acre. Lo que realmente es importante para esto, y es mucho de lo que acabo de describir, que es que tenemos ahora una propuesta en frente de nosotros que contiene los atributos clave, que son el agua, el agua, la accesibilidad. Está en el área de la mayor densidad, en realidad, en el pasaje del Plan Comprehensivo de 2009. También es grande lo suficiente que puede ofrecer una escala, que como comité pensamos que iba a ser un asunto atractivo. Que se puede escalar de las carreteras. Es un parcelo de 22 acres. Y también nos reunimos con la organización de Carney mientras estábamos pasando el proceso de nuestra investigación de fact finding. Y la reputación era muy buena, nuestra reacción fue muy positiva. Así que tenemos un desarrollador de calidad que ha hecho estos proyectos y ha obtenido financiación de los estatutos en fuentes de financiación en el pasado. Y para volver al principio, lo que hace esto es que cumple una necesidad muy claramente articulada y cuantificada y beneficiará a los trabajadores locales y seniores de una manera tangible y concreta. Esto realmente va a ayudar a la gente mucho. Así que nuestro comité está muy detrás de ello y estamos muy esperando que se vote.
Gracias Jonathan. Antes de continuar, si todos se mueven a la derecha, si hay un asiento extra allí, ¿se levanta la mano? Hay gente en el pasillo buscando asientos. No, toma un minuto y ven. Hay un asiento, asiento. ¿Alguien en el pasillo quiere un asiento? ¿Se levanta la mano si estás sentado al lado de un asiento vacío? El asiento es por delante.
Uno por aquí.
Gracias Jonathan. Denise George, presidenta de la Casa de la Virgen de los Norte, está aquí para hablar de la relación del hospital con esta propiedad y, gracias Denise. Lo sé, solo...
Tengo que decir, esto es el más cerca.
¿Crees que es? Intenta, tal vez es un poco cerca.
No creo que puedan escucharme, ¿pueden escucharme?
¿Qué número dice? En la tarjeta, justo en frente. No hay número.
Buenas tardes a todos. Gracias por invitarme esta noche. Así que soy Denise George, presidenta de la Casa de la Virgen de los Norte. He estado en la hospitala más tiempo que puedo permitir, pero ciertamente longo lo suficiente para haber sido educada en el Plan Comprehensivo para la ciudad, así como conversaciones con, ciertamente, Jonathan muchos años atrás, probablemente más de diez años atrás, sobre un proyecto como este. Y así, voy a hablar sobre la conexión que la Casa de la Virgen tiene con el proyecto. Uno es directo y el otro es indirecto. Así que la conexión directa es que la propiedad que se propone es, el hospital posee esa propiedad, se ha vendido. Así que la tierra, la tierra fue deuda al hospital muchos, muchos años atrás. Está adyacente a la propiedad de Wells Manor y así, esa propiedad ha sido vendida para el propósito de este proyecto. Así que eso es más directo. El indirecto, quiero ser muy, muy claro. Wells Manor, Wells Manor fue un proyecto que Mike Mazzarella, algunos de ustedes probablemente conocen a Mike, estaba responsable de. Fue basado en HUD housing. Y la tierra fue proporcionada por el hospital entonces. De nuevo, fue deuda al hospital de Wells. Y así, el proyecto se construyó, estaba acercando a 35 años de edad. No es parte del hospital, es una corporación separada llamada Wells Manor Corporation. Y estaba en el hogar, el negocio de la vivienda accesible. Pasamos al punto, y la conexión con el hospital es que los artículos de la corporación de Wells Manor requerían que siete de los miembros del Consejo de la Casa de la Virgen de los Norte se convirtieran en el Consejo de Wells Manor. Así que eso es la conexión, eso es todo, no hay conexión financiera de nada. Así que, rápido, 30 y algo años, y Wells Manor necesitaba ser... So fast forward 30 something years and Wells Manor needed to be, needed capital. And so where were they going to get the capital from? So they sold it to another developer who, who, you know, is maintaining the mission of affordable senior housing on that property. And the intention, we were hoping that they would expand that project as well. When the project was sold, Wells Manor came into proceeds from the sale, about $6 million of proceeds. Wells Manor, not the hospital. And the attorney general was very, very clear that because this was HUD money that originally financed the project, that it, the money could only be used for housing and very specifically affordable housing or workforce housing. So the attorney general now has $6 million in the bank, holding it. And where Wells Manor, the board of Wells Manor, which remembers partly the board of Northern Duchess Hospital, really stepped in, worked with the attorney general to ensure and get extensions on this money because they want, they don't want to hold this money longer than a year. The money was going to go anywhere the attorney general said it was going to go if we could not come up with a place to put it. Wells Manor board, the Northern Duchess board, myself, we were all very committed to keeping that money, that $6 million in this community. We worked very hard over the past year, more than a year, a lot of legal expenses to convince the attorney general to let, to give us extensions on this money. And so now the attorney general is in agreement that this project will qualify and so the $6 million that's sitting in their bank account can come over and help to fund this project. So that's the long and the short of the connection. Thank you.
Thank you. And Denise, I want to thank you and the boards. It's, it's a big deal to have a local institution or hospital stand up and fight to keep $6 million of sales proceeds from the sale of a development in our community, in our community. This money could have gone to the Bronx, it could have gone to New York City, it could have gone anywhere. But they fought and spent money to retain the money here so that we could realize our legal obligation of providing workforce housing. So, so thank you for that. Next, I think we have Ken Carney and his team from Carney Development.
Good luck. Good evening. Good evening supervisors, members of the board. Thank you for taking the time to set this up tonight. My name is Ken Carney. I'm the president and founder of Carney Realty Development Group. We founded 30 years ago. Started working in Duchess County 30 years ago. And we've developed close to 2,000 units with at least half of that here in Duchess, in Duchess County. I'm here tonight with Dan Martin from the Housing Partnership. We were fortunate to meet Dan in our projects. It's always a collaboration between a not-for-profit and a for-profit developer and that's what we have here. Here with Andy Lern from CPL, who's our project engineer, he's worked very hard on, on the site plan and our counsel, Charlie Montalban. So our architect is AJ Kapolak, Tim Miller Associates is our planner and so forth. But a little bit about the Carney Group. We do three things. We develop, we build. We build all of our own projects. We're not general contractors. Only one time did we actually take on a project that we didn't have an ownership stake in. But more importantly, we manage. We're hands-on managers. We are. We live it. Our phones are always on and my, my youngest, our youngest son is my full partner, Sean, and a part of every day, every week is spent on management. If you have any questions regarding our management history here in Duchess County, I encourage you to reach out to Duchess County Planning, speak to anybody there who's worked with us over the past 30 years, like I said. This project here would again be developed with the Carney Group, the Housing Partnership. Our affiliate, T E R N Construction, T E R N, it's been around since probably 2015, would construct it. And then after a construction period, 18 months, 16 months, then the Carney Group comes back in as the manager, the property manager. What we are proposing here is on 23 acres, we're proposing 80 units, a mix of one, two, and three bedroom units. Rents on the, I need my glasses. On the one bedrooms will start at $1,230.
Jim, I think you have that slide.
Yeah. Okay. I'll get you the rent set. Our, our management style, we build an onsite management office. It'll be manned Monday through Friday, but more importantly, we have an onsite superintendent that lives there. That onsite superintendent is our eyes and ears 24/7. If there's a problem in the building, I just need glasses. If there's a problem in the building. I've loved it, great glasses my whole life, but it's time now. So the onsite superintendent is our eyes and ears 24/7. Over this past weekend, Thanksgiving weekend, I got a call early Saturday morning, we had an alarm going off. It was a problem with one of our fire alarms and so forth. So we got a call and over Thanksgiving weekend, we had to take care of it. Like I said, we live the management. My son and I, there is no time off. We are the call, we don't disappear and it's one of the reasons I think we've had success, continued success in this county is because of our accountability in regards to management. So we have a mix of one, two, and three bedroom apartments. The one bedroom apartments rents will range from $1,265 to $1,687 to $1,897. The two bedrooms, $1,500, $1,800 for a two bedroom. We'll have some at $2,024 and then a couple of $2,200. But the majority of the rents are in the $1,265 for a one, $1,518 for a two, and $1,753 for a three bedroom. Our funding sources, as Denise pointed out, we are very fortunate and blessed that both Northern Duchess Hospital, the Wells Manor have worked with us to keep this money intact. We have developed, I think somewhere between 24 and 26 similar developments throughout the Hudson Valley. These developments are funded with a combination of state funding, state tax credits, and federal tax credits. The funding that we receive from Wells Manor is going to enhance our application and allow us to keep this project more affordable. Once we are awarded funding, we syndicate, if you will, the tax credits. We form a limited partnership. It's a 15-year limited partnership. For the last 20 some odd years, in the last 20 projects, we have partnered with the Raymond James Tax Credit Group out of Tampa, Florida. They're the largest tax credit syndicator in the nation. And this is how we structure it. For 15 years, they are the limited partnership. All the tax credits flow to them. We're the managing general partner, the Housing Partnership and the Carneys are the managing general partner. We're responsible for everything, everything. We're responsible to build it, we're responsible to manage it, we're responsible to pay the bills. At the end of 15 years, we buy out our limited partners. It's in all of our agreements. We're in this for the long term. I have a legacy plan. My son's in the business and our grandchildren will be in the business as well. At the end of 15 years, we stay in as the managing general partner and then, then the project is affordable for another 35 years, at least 35 years, subject to the affordability requirements that were placed on the property based on our funding applications. So the initial affordability period is 50 years. Does not disappear at 15 years. This is not a tax exempt project. It's not taxed at. It is subject to taxation on the New York State Real Property Tax Law 581. As far as the site, I'm going to let Andy Lern come up and say a couple of words about the, the site.
Good evening, everyone. As Ken said, I'm Andy Lern, the project engineer with CPL Architects and Engineers. I'm going to use this pointer here. Which one is this?
The little red one.
Okay. So I'm just going to go over some of the details of the site itself. As Ken said, this is a 23.3 acre site located between Astor Drive and Rhine Cliff Road, also known as West Marcus Street. The site actually has the access easement off of Astor Drive via Wells Manor Lane right here. And Star Park is located directly across the street here. Let's see, we have Wells Manor is located here as well. Can we go to the next slide? This is just a general overview of where the site is basically located. Keep going. Can you get to the best, best? So the site is going to be accessed via, via Wells Manor Drive and Rhine Cliff Road. In discussions with the New York State DOT, which has jurisdiction over Rhine Cliff Road, typically for a development like this, the site would be an entrance access only, that's the DOT regulations. We've been able to work with the DOT to make this a full access in and out entrance at the request of the town. The condition of that is that this access road be a one-way out access to Wells Manor Lane only. Based on a traffic study that we've performed and updated, based on comments received from the planning board, which incorporates some summer traffic from Star Park as a result of swimming and summer programs, the, the analysis indicates there's really no, no change in the, the level, capacity level, user analysis of the, of the intersection that we studied. The, the site will be served by water and sewer from the village. We have a, a will serve letter from the village. We've had those conversations. We haven't started designing yet, but based on the estimate that we provided, the village has indicated that they would be able to provide us with that service. As you may or may not know, the, the Village Wastewater Treatment Plan is actually located right here. So it will be a relatively easy connection for, for sewer. Water supply, it will, we're not sure yet. Will likely come from, from Astor Drive, but could potentially come from Rhine Cliff as well. Jumping back to access, as, as some people have mentioned, there, there is a curve here with, with some site distance that has some concerns. Our plan is to actually cut, cut back this hillside so that we have adequate site distance as required by New York State DOT requirements. The site will require some water pollution prevention plan in accordance with the New York State D C requirements. That has been preliminarily developed and sized. We will prepare, meet in all those standards as, as to the quality and peak flow requirements. The site itself is going to be split into four buildings with parking along the front here. Based on some initial comments received from the planning and other committees, we have modified this design since the original submission to provide as much green space as possible between the parking spaces and the buildings while working with the slope to the site. Amenities include playground, walking trails. There, we've been working with the Winnie King Land Trust who has control over this site west of the project to develop walking trails within the site and connecting to their property. We've also, as, as was mentioned previously, we tried to make the site as walkable as possible. That means that with this access road, there will be a walkway along this access road with potential connection, crosswalk connection to Star Park as well extending the sidewalks along Rhine Cliff Road to, to complete the walk, pedestrian connection to the village. I think that pretty much covers everything for the site panelists. You have anything else to add?
I talked, I touched on a lot of this, the 80 rental units, 18 ones, 44 twos, 18 threes. Income's range from 60 to 90%. That's why you have the different rent levels. We talked about the onsite management office, superintendent's unit, gazebo, outdoor terrace, playground, counter rooms, onsite laundry, bike storage, and also a fitness room. We've, when my son came into the business 11 years ago, I was thinking about slowing down, but he came in with energy and thoughts and he's taken the business to another level since he's been involved. We've won several awards. We won in 2019, we won the Upstate Development of the Year. Won awards from Pace University and other non-for-profits and planning groups throughout the Hudson Valley. So I'll tell you this, we're accountable. We're accountable. We do own construction. If there is an issue, you're not dealing with a general contractor. The call goes to me. If there's an issue with management, again, you're not dealing with a management company. The call goes to me and we're accountable. And that's why I'm able after 30 years to continue to work in this county and continue to give recommendations. So thank you for the time.
The next part of tonight is really Warren going over any responses, which I don't think we really have, to referrals and the town's procedure for how we, how we go ahead with a workforce housing project. Warren, you want to do that now?
Sure. Well, the, the response that there is on the agenda.
Mike?
Oh, sorry. Hear me?
I gotta speak right, right in the.
Hard to speak and look down. The response that we, that we did receive from our referral, we're obligated under our law to send the project at its insipid stages to the planning board and to the HAPAC for their comments, which we have received and sent on to the developer who has provided us.
Warren and the C A B.
I'm sorry.
Were required to send it to the C A B as well.
And, and the C A B, but that's not on the.
Get it to this, I'm sorry.
And we've gotten actually responses to those comments from the developers. 130 pages, I'll read it to you now.
I wouldn't let him, don't worry.
I just wanted to let you know that we have received. I just wanted to let you know that we have received those responses. Um, we're not taking any position with regard to those comments. Uh, we, we're going to evaluate the, uh, developers' responses to those comments and, um, issues will be discussed and resolved as the process moves forward. So, we're not going to get into any of that tonight. Um, the, the actual procedure, and I, I think this was disseminated, and this is quite lengthy, but.
You don't have to go through.
I'm not going to go through. I'm going to go through it in just an outline.
Two minutes.
People understand. Um, the, the, the law is, is, is a little bit difficult to understand. Um, so, um, I, I worked with, uh, consultants and developed a, um, procedure to be followed by the town board, um, in, uh, in the legislative process. You have to understand, uh, that this is a floating zone, uh, which means that an application for development such as this, uh, has to come before the town board. It's not as a matter of right development. Um, the town board has the legislative discretion to, uh, accept the project, approve the project, modify the project, complete discretion, and it can be hap, it can happen at any stage during the application process. Um, uh, the, the step one in the, in the process is the submission of the preliminary concept plan, and I've listed, if you can get a copy of this, I think it's online. Provides all of the, the detail which, uh, the developer was required to produce and has produced, um, as part of step one. Uh, the step two is the compliance with the requirements of the State Environmental Quality Review Act, which we call CICA, and the town's local waterfront protection plan. Uh, and, uh, we, we, we have an initial CICA review, environmental review of this project as part of this step, and also referral to the, uh, local waterfront protection plan, uh, for their consistency review and, um, decision or opinion as to whether the project is consistent with our LWRP. Uh, the next step, and those have been completed, the next step is the referral to the planning board and the workforce housing committee, which we've already done. We have their comments and we've seen that, and I described in the outlines what that entails. Um, the next step will be the initial review of the application, uh, which we haven't done yet in terms of establishing lead agency. And in the environmental review, the CICA review, uh, there are a lot of involved agencies in this project, um, and, uh, we have to determine, uh, which, uh, involved agency will be the lead agency to take the lead in the environmental review. Uh, and that's done through a coordination process, which the town board will undertake, and ultimately determine, uh, which agency will be the lead agency for the initial environmental review of the project. Uh, then we have the public informational meeting, uh, which we've kind of added to the statute. It's not part of the statute, but that's what's here tonight. Um, and the, uh, the intent of, of this meeting, uh, is to provide the public with information about the project, which I think we've done a pretty good job at, um, but it's not a.
Please don't, don't interrupt. It wasn't said, but Warren's, Warren has the floor.
Tonight is the public informational hearing, um, and it's not a public hearing, um, and it's just, uh, intended to provide. Why don't you come up closer? You can stand there and hear.
Sorry?
No, you can stand right there and you can hear better. Um, and, um, so rather than shouting out from the back of the room, come up here and then he can hear.
It was a question that, it was, it was a non sequitur. It was a question.
Okay.
Please, let's be respectful.
So, so the, the public hearing will be the next step in the process, and that's where the public will have an, will make, probably go through the same, similar presentation, maybe in more detail, and the public will have an opportunity to comment or ask questions, um, and it'll be a much more inclusive process. Um, then we complete the CICA review, the lead agency, whoever that may be, um, and the lead agency will make a secret determination, uh, as to whether the project should be what we call HAZDE. HAZDE means that, uh, they've identified at least one or more, uh, significant environmental impacts which require the preparation of environmental impact statement. Um, or they can NECD, what we call, uh, a negative declaration of the CICA, uh, in which the lead agency can determine that the project does not have the potential for significant environmental impacts, which hasn't already been addressed by the application and the process we've gone through, and doesn't require the preparation of a draft environmental impact statement. It's not a yes and no, it's, it's only an environmental review. Um, and then the town board, after that process, uh, will take action on the concept plan, which is already once submitted and it may be amended and refined during the, uh, the process that we go through. And, uh, when we complete that, uh, we will prepare a local law, and the local law will actually, um, amend if it's, we go through with the project. Um, we'll amend our code, uh, to provide for the workforce housing within this site, uh, with, with, with specific regulations and provisions in that local law as to how that, uh, property will be developed for this workforce housing, which needs to be followed by the, the developer. Um, and, uh, if we go through that process, we would then adopt a local law, um, and then the matter would be referred to the planning board for site plan review, um, and for its site plan determination to make sure that the project is in fact in compliance with the local law, you know, provisions of Arizona. But you can get a copy of this if you want to understand the process.
Thanks, Warren. Um, does anyone on the town board have any questions or anybody? Alan? Ed? Sean?
I have one question for, um, Ken Carney. Um, this is not a tax exempt project, and you say that it's affordable for 50 years. What happens after then?
We'll all be dead and we won't care.
I expect this to be hitting my climate. No, they say the Irish are a little too revolting, but, uh, but at the end of 50 years, um, we have done, we did one project where we actually, in our financing, the financing dictates you have to go at least 50 years. Uh, on one project we did, we went out 99 years, and I was against it at the time, uh, for one reason, and it's, it's come to fruition. Because what's happening now is at the end of, at the end of 50 years, which is still 30 years away on that project, it's difficult to get additional funding to recapitalize the project, because the state agencies look at it like, why would we put more money in here? We already have the affordability for another 49 years. So, um, you know, we are, we are.
That's a finance issue.
Yes.
Can the town mandate this always be affordable housing?
Yes, yeah, yes. But with the caveat that I will tell the town that the financing will say 50, and then that allows us in 50 years.
Yeah, you have to be able to recapitalize, but we can mandate that it's always affordable.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Um, I guess, you know, we'll take some questions and comments before we erupt into a melany here, though. I thought we asked that, uh, we have restarted our senior van pickup after COVID. Tuesdays and Thursdays at 9:30 beginning, uh, December 6th. We'll expand it as we can, and we'll see what we dictates. You have to pre-register with the town clerk. You have to be a Rhine Beck resident. You have to be a senior. I guess if you feel you're a senior, you're a senior, and you have to be able to get on the van by yourself. It's not handicap accessible. So, um, does anybody have any questions? And I want people to calmly come up and, and ask. You're speaking to the town board, not the public. Come up, introduce yourself. These are at our discussion, so please, uh, go ahead, gentlemen in the red shirt, come on up. These are questions for, for everybody here.
Do you spend any studies on? I'm sorry.
It doesn't work, see?
Oh, it doesn't work. Okay, well, I'll speak loud, okay? How's that?
Can you introduce yourself?
My name is John Schwartz. I'm here in the resident of the village. Real quick, was there any kind of analysis impact done to like the town, the police department, fire department, hospitals? Because, you know, the experience is when you have affordable housing, low-income housing, it's an extra burden on the community. So, has there been those studies done and have we seen it?
What kind of studies?
Traffic, police, fire, and hospitals. So, you're going to have people showing up to eat, eat, probably most likely with low insurance.
Before I, uh, no, no, this is not, this is affordable, this is workforce housing. We can assume that people, let me just say before I kick this to Warren to answer, during COVID, we've seen our population explode here.
Absolutely.
Um, and, you know, this is about affordable housing for your kids, for your parents, and this is about, uh, economic diversity. So, I'll let Warren answer, but, um, our population's already exploding. This is 80 units, maybe about 160 more people.
Maybe families joining.
200 people, 250 more people coming into a town that isn't even 10,000. So, I get your question. Thank you. Warren, go ahead.
Yeah, the, the short answer is yes. Initially, uh, those issues were, uh, analyzed by the town in the environmental review and in the creation of the comprehensive plan and the zoning law, uh, to the extent that we didn't have a project-specific activity for us. Uh, they, uh, they were analyzed again very carefully when we created the workforce housing local law. That would be a public hearing, we had an environmental review and considered the impact of, uh, more of the generic impact of the, uh, of the project, uh, in, in the context of the local adoption process. And in accordance with this application, we're going to be doing, uh, an environmental review, uh, and those, all of those issues will be, uh, treated in the environmental review for this, for this project.
Thanks. I also believe that the Duchess County, um, Housing Needs Assessment addressed this, but it's something that will continue to be looked at.
Okay. Just want the town people to know.
Thanks. Sure, come on up, uh, lady in the red, like, black and red. Okay.
Um, I just wanted to talk about sewage, because I live at Wells Manor, and I don't know if this is appropriate for the circumstance, but, um.
Can you say, can you tell us your name?
Yeah, Ellen Crystal.
Hi, Ellen.
Hi.
Oh, I've spoken to you.
Yeah.
Hi.
Okay, so where, at Wells Manor, the sewage just is right there on our, on the property where we live, you know, very close to people and we smell it a lot. And we've addressed, we've tried to address it, we've, you know, tried to look into it, tried to get information, and have never really gotten a clear idea of why it smells. And there are people, some of the people, I, where I, I'm at the top of the hill, I don't smell it as much unless I'm driving by, but there are people that live very, very close to it, and so.
What's the question?
The question is, will that kind of thing be addressed? Is, or how, how do we have access to give, because this is going to definitely affect us, we're going to be living right next to it. We have questions about the type of construction and the.
Do you have questions about the sewage capacity?
The sewage capacity?
Well, the developer will have to work with the village.
Right.
To expand the sewage capacity, and it's all overseen by the village and state regulations.
Okay. And will we have access to people that are in charge and the.
They're right here, they're here tonight. It's your, your, your village mayor is in charge of your sewer system. I think he's, Gary is, Gary, I'm not going to let you take the key on this one tonight. It's, it's owned by the village.
Okay. We need to talk.
Excellent.
I'm on it.
Okay, uh, orange shirt person in the back. Anyone who wants to talk, you can just come up front and start queuing up if you want.
Thanks.
Uh, questions?
Hi there.
Hi.
Uh, John McMelchey, I'm on O Street.
What's your name?
Matt Melch, J. Matt, they call me.
Oh, hi, J. Matt.
Hi. Um, I'm just curious about this seven acre piece that's the buffer between, uh, the larger property.
Okay, I can answer that, Ken, tell me if I'm wrong. Two, the hospital owned two pieces of property on the same deed, the 23 acres and the seven acres. The 23 acres is in the town, that's where this project is proposed. The seven acres have nothing to do with it, it was transferred on the same deed. I know nothing about plant, it's in the village, I don't know.
I don't think that's a good enough answer.
I'm not done.
You also, you know, your attitude changed.
It's really hard to maintain order in this.
It's not. On hospitality, it's easy. Just smile and be nice, that's all you have to do.
I agree.
Thank you. So, I, my question is, I, I know it's in the village and I'm sure I can harass the mayor again, but I was curious, if we're going to approve this larger piece, can we protect the smaller piece as a buffer?
It's not in our jurisdiction, it's not in the town.
Good answer. Thank you.
George Baker, Conservation Advisory Board. I, um, I guess his labor or misapprehension reading the agenda before this meeting that the town board would be discussing the findings of the AIPAC planning board and have agendas based on how it was worded in that agenda. I guess I'm mistaken on that front? So, nobody on the town board then wants to tell the public that all three of those boards have opposed this proposal as presented?
We made it public record, it's published in this agenda, all of your responses.
I just thought that could seemingly be something I would have.
We haven't accepted the proposal yet, and Warren said they'll all be redressed, addressed within the context of. Excuse me.
Thank you.
Sure.
One thing has been the assumption so far tonight that this will be for Rhine Beck. Well, the capital program, the.
Ideal questions.
Yeah. The capital program's manual. Well, we want it to be anywhere, somewhere close to true here, so let's read. Let's read from the manual that governs this program, written by the people who provide the financing. And it says, Ken, first of all, Ken Carney is a great builder, his buildings are great. We want to make it work for us. That's my, I'm not objecting to Ken Carney by any means. Here's what the, here's what the law says. The Fair and Equitable Housing Office reviews, among other things, any preferences in tenant selection, marketing plans to reach the least likely to apply, tenant selection policies and lotteries, and reasonable accommodation policies. And here, here it also says, "All preferences in tenant selection must be approved by New York State Fair and Equitable Housing Office. Tenant selection and occupancy preferences, even when not intentionally discriminatory, may in practice deny equal housing opportunities or perpetuate segregation without justification and thus be prohibited by the Fair Housing Act and Human Rights Law." So, we're not trying to scare anybody, but there are a lot of things here that are not being talked about. And particularly, for example, will we have access to the site once it's built? Once it's built, is that now a private site?
Who's, it's private property.
That's exactly our point, not it, it isn't now, and there.
It is now, it's private property now.
I understand that. The town is able to buy this for them.
The town has not bought it, it's owned by a private individual.
I understand these things. I understand these things. Your way forward is not the only way forward, it's the only one we're hearing tonight, and that's fine.
But I don't understand what you're talking about.
A better way to use that land that serves the whole town and also serves.
Aneel, you're talking about private property.
No, no, I understand that, I can hear you.
So, are you, are you willing to buy the property and donate it?
The property is for sale at a price less than you paid for the trail pavilion that is, that, that still requires a porta potty to serve the little kids. So, yeah, the town could buy it.
Why would the town want to buy a piece of property?
To make that part of a green belt that goes from the library across that whole beautiful space, and then it calls Astor Rhine Beck for permission to walk across their unused lands and have access right to, um, Franklin Forest. lands and have access right to Fern Cliff Forest. So we could have a whole green belt through that part of the area. As we said, let's just say, Ken Carney is a great builder. He has a, go to the Commons up in Redwood. He's got another process, parcels to do phase two for the Commons, and everybody wants it with reason.
All right, Anil, you're supposed to be addressing the board, and you're supposed to have questions. The board didn't entertain buying this for green space. There was-
You don't rule us, you represent us, that's why you're speaking. And I'm not trying to cause dissension, I'm trying to bring us so that it's something that serves everyone. We want these things, but nothing comes for free. And other things, so to answer your one question, yes, we could buy this property for less than you paid for that white elephant that, when, that was built, without talking to anybody. That we don't want to see again.
That's absolutely not true.
Well, first of all, let-
That's not true.
Then I, I grant that it may not be true.
We had hearings for years on that pavilion.
But then why is it not the first? Anil, Anil. Well, I think you've, I think you've said some pretty insidious things. How, I don't even know how much the land sold for. It was never a part of the town's plan or project to buy additional, we own, we own a huge park. We have-
Other people who want to see.
Sorry?
Other people want it.
Yeah. Dan, did you-
I just wanted to break it off a little bit. I just wanted to introduce myself.
I can't go around, I can't go around.
Dan Martin, past president, and I just retired from the Housing Partnership. I was the partner of Ken Carney and Carney Development. You may not really know what the not-for-profit does in this transaction. Regarding lotteries, we're typically the approved administering agent, that we assist in the lotteries and make sure they're done fairly in state's protocol. But more importantly, just a background on us, the not-for-profit that's the partner with Ken Carney. We were formed in 1982, our founding father was David Rockefeller. We are primarily what you would call a moderate or middle income not-for-profit. In our history, we assisted in the development of over 21,000 units of homeownership. Just to complement that, we obtained probably over $500 million in subsidies for those housing projects. Typically subsidies, we talk about the $6 million grant, they flow through the not-for-profit because we're a 501(c)(3), so the taxes, yeah. That way more money goes back into the affordable housing part of it. But in the 21,000 units of homeownership we built, in the great foreclosure crisis, we had less than one quarter of 1% foreclosure. We do it right, we deal with housing subsidy dollars, and we deal with counseling, all those things will be true here, even though this is a rental. It is almost impossible in today's world to build affordable homeownership or workforce homeownership. Many reasons why, and mostly the bank financing. But I think when you're looking at how we're building 80 units of housing, when Jonathan spoke before, he said there was one unit for sale rental in the town for $1,850. There were actually 14 others. The highest one was $8,000. Median of those was about $3,600. There are absolutely no affordable housing units, workforce housing units.
Dan, I want, I want the residents to speak. Thanks.
My name is Carrie Hourback. I was wondering, my name is Carrie Hourback, I was just wondering if there are alternative sites.
Could you speak into the microphone?
My name is Carrie Hourback, and I'm just wondering if there are any alternative sites.
Yes, it seems to me that no one realizes this is a private property issue. I mean, if there are other people out there who own land that can connect to village sewer and water and want to build affordable housing, Warren, could we amend our zoning overlay to allow that? I mean, we looked pretty carefully when we wrote the law.
It was very difficult to find these two areas that could accommodate-
There's another parcel that could work, where the Everready Diner is. There are maybe several other parcels, but they're privately owned, and we don't know if those individuals want to do it.
Did you ask?
It's kind of not-
The other alternatives were explored when the law was created. That's not to say there may not be another parcel of land that could be-
Warren's saying that we explored all this when we wrote the land. We passed this law in 2019, and we identified the parcels that could be developed then. We're pretty exhausted, would you say exhaustive search, Jonathan?
Yes, it's exhausted.
I think our committee spoke to anyone, anywhere, that owned anything that could be developed, that was close to the village, walking distance to the village, had access to village water and sewer. And this is what we got.
And these are the, these two parcels, the two parcels with highest density in the entire town. So we're talking that, six units per acre versus one unit per five acres.
So it's also, okay, but that's, people want to know if there are other sites. And the answer is, maybe there's one other site. It's not the person who owned it, isn't, doesn't seem, isn't willing to develop it into workforce housing. So this is what we have right now.
Could I add, it's not walkable, and it's over a mile from the village center as opposed to half a mile to the property over there.
Dodd is on the workforce housing committee, he's saying-
On the original committee in 2005 before it was passed, it's only, the other characteristic is it's adjacent to a power plant, a power site, which would be a concern for me for small children. And the other thing mentioned by Ms. George is that there's not a $6 million benefit associated with that part. Those are key there.
My name's Robert, I've been resident for about 25 years.
What's your last name?
I'd rather not give my last. Eighty parcels, right? My question is, it's so close to the village, that on Thursday to Sunday, it takes you four nights to get through because of the traffic.
Yep.
Right? Now you're adding 80 apartments, so you're adding about another 5,000 to 6,000 residents that we don't need already.
Five or 6,000?
Yeah, but eighty apartments, you figure three, three people through an apartment, that's 2,400, plus the friends, that's all.
Eighty times 240.
Eighty times three is what? 2,400.
That's 240.
All right, 240.
Not 20, not 2,400, it's a little different.
A little different. Plus the garbage, right? Plus the traffic, plus the family members. It takes you four nights to get through. Those are the hoods that come up here on the beat, they use all cadets, because you like to see the bougie Rhinebeck. That's what it's called now, bougie Rhinebeck. You walk down the block, you got Louis Vuitton bags.
What's the, what's the question?
My question is, how's it good for the community, adding more traffic, and more pooch? How's it good?
It's good because people can afford to live there.
I can afford to live there.
Okay.
And I'm not rich.
Okay.
And I grew up poor.
Thank you.
And I'm not getting no subsidy. You raise my taxes 15%.
25.
15% you raise my taxes for the house on the ward, and reaches on the ward, you raise everybody's taxes.
No, we raise assessments to full market value.
Yes, my house now assesses that to full market value. Raise my taxes.
Okay, we're not, we're not here to discuss that.
Oh, by the way, how many stories is it built up to?
You know, two stories.
That's it?
Yep.
Go on, like the legends.
They look like-
The legends, I'm off. I used to live there.
Did you want to sneak up on the ladies?
Thank you for having this meeting, and my name is Al Booton, I live on Platt Avenue.
We're all trying to listen. I say, please be quiet, we're trying to listen. Have some respect.
I will.
Then do so.
Okay, my name is Al Booton, and I live on Platt Avenue, in Rhinebeck. My question is, is this private, this is private property. What's tax revenue generated by this tax, by this property? Is it exempt from any taxes? No? Okay, so at the end of this project, will it be subject to reguet taxation, just like the Village Green is taxed? Or is there a 501(c)(3) or any, any tax exemption?
I got you. This is subject to real property taxation law 581a, and I believe it will be taxed just like the gardens and the woods are taxed. Their condos and Wells Manor, they're based on not the amount of what the whole property is worth, they're based on what they could rent for. Just like the gardens and the woods. Gardens and the woods pay lower tax rate because they have a different taxation structure in New York State.
The short answer is yes, they will be taxed.
Okay, and that includes the school tax?
Yes.
Do they get, do they get a benefit of a lower tax?
No.
No benefit?
No.
That was not-
You already went through that, in their presentations. They get a tax credit, but that has nothing to do with-
These are fully taxed properties, and they will go on the tax roll.
What is, what is the tax credit?
I'm not going to play that to you. It's something that-
The builder gets a tax credit for building these from the state and the federal government, that's partially how this funded.
Oh, okay, so it's not-
They will be on our tax rolls, they will be assessed, they will pay town, county, and school fees, fire tax, and library tax.
Okay, thank you, that's what I-
And water district.
Such not taxed.
Good evening, my name is Jesse Larry, I'm a resident in the village. In terms of accountability, I'm curious why there are going to be no studio apartments available in these, in the complex. Seems to me that people want to really be able to afford a place, that often, a studio is the right answer. It also allows people to live alone, as opposed to having to roommate up. So I'm wondering if that was ever discussed. And then secondly, I'm wondering what the town plans to ask of the builder in terms of green building, and will they be using, what kind of new materials will they be using that are green? What kind of energy sources will they be using in terms of solar, alternative fuel sources? So I'd like to, because sometimes that's not always addressed, like in a PIR report, I just like to know what the builder plans on doing to help keep that to a minimum.
Ken, we're, thank you for your question, very thoughtful. We haven't discussed studios, we could, and we're not at the point yet, we haven't accepted the process, the project, but we would talk to him about alternate green.
No fossil fuel.
No fossil fuel.
They have, we're here to pitch to them of New York State, which-
And we could work with them to go green, you know, more green on these buildings.
It seems like there's room there for solar.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I don't really have a question, I just want to say thank you very much for all of your hard work. I know it's been a long process, you're doing a great job, and a lot of these questions have been answered.
What, can you give us your name?
Tammy Valentino.
Thank you, Tammy. Any other questions, comment, well, questions? Look, this is the first in a long discussion. As Jonathan said, we're legally and ethically, we feel man needed to provide this housing. I don't feel like 2,400 or 240 or 160 people moving in will be a stress on our town.
Nine nights to get through. I have a right to speak. It's my right. It's my right. I have a constitutional right to speak. Don't tell me, don't talk to me, shut up. I'm not being rude, don't talk to me, shut up. You're not being rude! Don't ever talk to me, shut up. I didn't touch up the food, can you make it straight?
Everybody, please, 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 please. I think we're going to, unless anybody is really going to say anything else, we're going to continue with our town meeting. So thank you for coming, listening. Please, thank you.
I need a motion for resolution 2022-243, an agreement with Center for Environmental Seat Barring Center for environmental-
That's good.
For clerical support.
Motion.
It's to hire, it's, thanks, it's to hire an environmental coordinator to work with us on the community, county's re-gassing, community climate smart. Wait, you got that, Tony?
Got it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moves unanimously. I'll make a motion for resolution 2022-244 for accounts payable abstract. May I have a second?
Okay.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Do we not have a capital budget transfer?
We do not.
Okay, we did not make the agenda, and there's one piece of business not on the agenda. I'll make a motion for, as of resolution 2022-245, to hire a bookkeeping clerk. May I have a second? Thank you, Alan. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moves unanimously. All right, well, I guess that's that, and I, motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everybody, thank you.